All right, I'm Tim Skogg. I'm chairman of the Shafter Select Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, October 7th, 2019. I'm told that we are live streaming on Facebook and that the CAT TV access will catch up in just a few minutes, so I hope that's the case. Let me check with the board. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. I did not see any minutes.
No minutes until late for the last one.
Okay. First up, I have payroll warrant number seven in the amount of $22,398.94.
Motion.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next I have check warrant number nine in the amount of $175,286.75.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Items over $1,000 on this warrant are $2,000 to Bennington County Sheriff, $9,900 to Delory, $7,900 to Matt Morris, says Trumbull Hill here.
Yes, and we're getting $5,500 of that back on the grant.
Okay, good. $1,100 to Morris Repair, $100,000 to People's United Bank.
That's the pre-tax loan.
$1,600 to Ribco Supply.
That's Culver's.
$8,500 to TAM, another $7,800 to TAM, $1,500 to Tractor Supply.
That's the compressor for the garage. We had to replace the compressor, this thing over here wasn't going to make it.
For the new garage?
Yeah, for the new garage.
Okay.
What was the one to Delory?
The one to Delory was truck that I can again, 1503, I'm sorry, the 2013 International.
So both those repair bills were on the one truck?
Uh, no, the other one was on the Army Truck, I believe. But the...
I'm gonna say it's like in excess of 15 grand on one truck, that's...
Well, it was in excess of 15 grand on one truck, but the truck was back for like a week before it had to go back for different problems. It's a lot of tear, wear and tear on a truck that was made in 2013.
Was that the one that ejected from?
Uh, yes.
That was a $10,000?
Uh, well, there was a lot wrong with it. It's kind of a laundry list, you can look at it. There was a lot wrong with it.
That was one of the class action suit where I got?
That is one of the one that ended the suit. So we will get some credit later on when we trade it in.
We'll get a discount coupon to buy another truck just like that. I know how those suits work.
That is exactly what the settlement is. They'll either pay us a small amount upfront or we get a discount on the next one.
Right.
Remember, it's not the dealer you're getting, it's the dealer you think you're getting.
Okay, and $20...
We just won't use the engine.
$24,000 to Weaver Landscaping, that would be...
That was Cross Hill, which we're getting...
Oh, that's Cross Hill?
Yeah, $12,000 back for it.
Oh, okay. And then $1,200 to William E. Daley. And those are the major items on there. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, check warrant number nine, $175,286.75 is approved 5-0-0.
A question came up, Dave, Mike and I went to look at that truck. Is it worth keeping it in every truck anymore?
That's, uh, it has value because it costs nothing and doesn't cost much to maintain.
Okay, I just...
Yeah.
They love it for big rocks.
It's good for tossing bulky...
Although, I understand a lot, but I mean, they just...
No, we don't spend a lot of money on the Army Truck, so it's really not a big burden.
Could have hurt it.
Yeah, it is hard to hurt the thing, and you can throw giant rocks in the back.
Yeah, yeah. No, I like that part of it, but I just break into question, it's a lot of defense on it.
Nah, the other one, but that's an engine issue.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, are there any announcements? Any public comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm very hard to hearing, so I'm gonna get a little closer.
Okay, pull up a chair if you'd like.
I like to know, since when the town got the right to hire a crew to cut trees on private They cut a dozen tree in my place, and there was nothing wrong with them, all nice life trees.
Well, we certainly have been cutting trees in the right of way.
Pardon me?
We cut trees in the right of way. They should not be cutting trees outside of the right of way.
They were behind the ditch, by the stone wall and everything, and there was nothing wrong with it. They cut two of them that size, and the other was smaller, they've cut at least a dozen of them, so...
Okay, well, where do you live?
841 Shafter Hollow.
It's a construction area where we're doing all that work.
It's part of the whole construction project up on the hollow.
All right.
Ken was, uh, not Ken, I'm sorry. Mike was supposed to come over today, or Friday or today, and I never see him. He never showed up, so that's why I'm here. I want to know what the heck is going on here. I got enough hassle with all this, I don't need this hassle. I got enough to deal with my loss with all this hassle.
Um, have you...
Yeah.
Do you know the trees he's talking about?
The trees are in the town's right of way.
Pardon?
The trees are in the town's right of way, and it's part of the construction project to make the road stay together. They are, like many of our roads, it appears over time, because they've been neglected, that things are on people's private property, but it is in the town right of way. And if we're gonna recreate this road or rebuild this road to make it work properly, we need to have the areas for the water to go and everything. I'm sorry, Mike didn't stop up today, he was supposed to stop up today. I'll make sure he stops up and talks to you tomorrow.
You're the one at office.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't recognize you.
Yeah, yeah, we will talk, and I'll make sure Mike comes up and goes over this with you tomorrow, because I know he talked to Weaver, too.
Tomorrow morning, I won't be there.
Tomorrow afternoon, Wednesday? What's a good time for you?
I'll be there after 12.
Okay, but we got tomorrow afternoon to talk to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Treasurers Report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Hello.
Good evening.
You want to fill up the September one?
Sure.
We haven't seen that one yet. Um, let's see what's going on. The big news there is taxes received as of the end of September, we've had almost $700,000. So they're coming in slow and steady, which is just right. Nothing else particularly going on that was... Just a normal month. Oh, you can see that that WageWorks negative, that should make your head explode a little bit. We had a refund from them, that's why we look like we're paying a negative amount for our healthcare coverage. That's just a refund that came through from some weird thing last year about a disagreement about when their coverage started, so that's what that is.
Okay, no, none of our heads are gonna explode over $10.
Yeah, it's $12, it's not a big deal. So budget status, those look a little strange if you're comparing it to last year. You look at the percentage of budget in revenues, that's simply because I had not yet gotten the tax bills out as of September 30th last year, so the taxes receivable are not appearing there in revenues. But you can see that the expenditures are exactly on track to the way they were last year.
That's what we worry about.
Right, yes. If you were ever gonna be worried, it would have been last year that we only had 5%. But this year, we're fine.
Okay, good.
We can look at the October 7th one, too. Basically, all that's gonna show you is the only activities. I sit in there and I collect money, that's what I do this time of year. So the only thing is the taxes received.
Or tax money came in?
Yeah, if you look down at the very bottom, you'll see that we're at, I put, I'm gonna keep track of that now, taxes received to date, so we're at just over 13% as of now.
Okay.
I think that's pretty normal. We continue to get one or two through the, or three through the credit card every week, which I like to see, and I'm getting calls about it. It's on people's radar.
Good.
The other, does anybody have any questions about the cash flow stuff?
No.
Okay, the other thing I want to talk about just for one minute is, there was a, you may have seen in VT Digger, another pretty bad, basically a theft from the general fund of another town, did you see that? Okay. It was through a phishing expedition through an email that purported to come from the head of the Select Board saying, "I need an emergency wire transfer."
Right, right, right.
And there were four of them over a period of time, $250,000 in a town probably not any bigger than Shafter. And so I've been talking to Dave and our bank about ways to make it absolutely impossible for that to happen in Shafter. It already, I get emails like that and I just toss them. I've gotten that exact one several times. I know Dave gets them all the time.
Yeah, a lot of them tonight.
But I'm a very suspicious person, and I'm not gonna have this job forever. So we're trying to make procedures and policies so that it is absolutely impossible. And what I think we're probably gonna need, and that's something you guys are gonna have to do, is have a policy that wire transfers simply cannot happen except me talking in person to somebody. And, you know, if it's an emergency, you're gonna have to tell it to my face. These emails are never, we can't have it through an email. And the way that they work is they say, "Hi, it's me, Tim, I'm just coming out of a meeting, going into another one, I need an emergency wire transfer, I'm not reachable, take care of it right now." So if you are in that situation and you need me to wire $200,000 to Cayman Islands, I'm not gonna do it, so just... And we need a policy.
So we missed our window.
So we just need a policy. And, I mean, it is my policy, it will be anybody who has, who's thinking, it's gonna be their policy, but we need to have it be...
Yeah.
The other thing is, I know that Dave is very, on top of all of the security stuff, but everybody who works in this building is taking, gonna be taking a sort of course in avoiding phishing and situations where they can take your system hostage and stuff like that.
Yeah, we're having a, because I get the same emails, I got an invoice tonight, coincided with a bill that we did just have go through, and your invoice is ready for your payroll services, which we just had one go through. And, you know, I'm looking at the top, and, you know, it's clearly not us, but I get them ordered by, but you get them, and...
Yes.
It doesn't take much, just, and, you know, in meetings I was in last week, they're talking about one out of every four places getting hacked and going up for ransom, and it's, you know, one of the problems I mentioned is, you know, we have hundreds of emails that just come with names. We have to open them, because I don't know all the residents, and we have a lot of angry people if we don't open them. But you just have to, you know, keep in mind, never to click on the link, and that's where the fault comes in, because you start looking at them, some, you hit it and you're like, oops, that was the wrong one.
Yeah.
So I talked to Tim, we're gonna sit down with RCS and make sure that all our backups are in place, because we're, the equipment, our hard equipment and the software and the equipment, if we replace all that, it really wouldn't be much. It's just if the data has the levels of protection we believe it has, so we're gonna straighten that out this week and just make sure, because then we could just say, "Oh, no, fine, we'll go buy the computers and go right back up to working again." Because eventually, these guys, they work for NSA and they work for large insurance companies, and listening to them was quite, you know, these guys are working full-time to keep these other guys from breaking in, yet, you know, one of their jobs is just going to companies that have already been broken into and trying to repair all the things, and these are big companies that have just overlooked something, so...
But of course, what we're talking about here is not hacking, it's just, it's much more low-tech than that. It's just they go on town websites and find out everybody's name and just start sending emails.
And that's how they want to get in. If they can get into one, they can start working around. It's amazing what they can do.
I got something that had your name on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did not see the VT Digger article that you specifically mentioned, but I've been seeing lots of articles on lots of news sites about this type of thing, social engineering, hacking, and one I just was talking to Dave about was specifically mentioning small towns, school boards. They're going after, you know, people who are likely, you know, not to give it a lot of thought and just, you know, to get a little bit of money out of them, and it's happening a lot.
They've been shutting down hospitals, you know?
Yeah, they shut down Baltimore, I don't know if they're back yet.
Yeah, so when I talked to the bank, I was saying, you know, "What can you do for me to make it so that these wire transfers can't happen?" And basically, they can't do anything. If I go to them and say, "I am certain that was Tim," they can say, "I strongly recommend that you get him on the phone before you do this wire transfer," but there's nothing they can do to, they can, so they can slow walk it, they can, you know, argue with me, but it's, but if I say, "Nope, you make this happen, it's an emergency," then they have to do it.
Can we write policies that the Treasurer has to abide by?
Yeah, when we have a number of them, and I'm sure I'll find some, something, I'll start digging around in the LCT, and our risk management people, they have policies like on everything. And it's Cyber Security Month, so it's on everybody's minds, so...
Yeah.
I'll see what we can find on that.
But yeah, I think in this day and age, it's just prudence not to wire a large sum of money to anywhere based on an email, no matter how good it looks, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You've never asked me to assume that it would be so counter to our usual procedure that I would need to hear a lot, but, you know, just in excess of caution, I think it should be something that's impossible as opposed to unlikely.
Yeah.
I have just a question, and maybe, the last meeting we had, which was the emergency meeting, neither you or Dave were here, and one of the, on the warrant was a payment to a bond company for $66,000, and I assume that was for the garage.
That's the garage bond, yeah.
But I was surprised that it wasn't more than $75,000, because I thought the first couple of years was...
There's two payments. The fall payment is principal and interest, and the spring payment is interest.
Thank you.
Yep, perfect. But we did okay without you.
Yeah.
We just had that one little thing, one little thing we weren't sure about.
Okay, is that it?
That makes sense.
Okay, Roads Report.
All right, well, project season is coming to an end. The Shafter Hollow project is ongoing. We have one more thing to do on Myers Road, we put a 300-foot underdrain down the center of the road to bring the water off from one side of the swamp to the other. That will be the last construction project for this season. The only one we're not going to get to is the hill north of the, west of the orchard on West Mountain, and we'll have to pick that up in the spring. We have to get to grading, we have to, we have a bunch of blocks coming, interlocking blocks to divide the new salt shed, so we can have the sand on one side and the salt on the other. You know, it's just pre-winter, it's October, time for pre-winter to get going. The hollow will probably be another two weeks. We're getting on, we're kind of moving away from the contractor, we spoke about this this morning, but on Perrin Road, where they put the water main in, they still need to grade that. I understand who's supposed to be contracted to grade it, but they haven't given them a time to do it. They also cut off part of the pavement on Lake Road, so they have to patch that, and, you know, clock's ticking, and they're all out in the swamp there, continuing with the pipeline, but they have to make that. They had asked us to grade the road, and I said, "There's no way we're grading it, because then it'll be our fault when it gets a big trench in it in this, you know, in February."
It'll probably settle.
Yeah, yeah, I figure it's gonna settle. If they didn't compact it right, then you guys come back and fix it, you know? Shouldn't be our responsibility to come back and fix their mess.
I don't think it'll settle that much, Dave. They had rollers done it, ready to trap, ready to...
Well, maybe they did. If they did, then I hope, I hope it stays.
The man swells right in the trap.
Yeah, it's still their responsibility, though, and I don't want to take any of the...
It's still been settled, but it's, I think they did only to...
And that's really about it, we're wrapping up the construction. Everything's done except for West Mountain.
The guardrails?
The guardrails are coming in after Columbus Day.
Okay.
They'll be going down North Road. Yep, thank you, I forgot about the guardrail. I thought about it this morning when I saw the cones, and had asked about, yeah, they're going in next week, hopefully, or the week after, you know, contractors...
And refresh my memory, are we doing something with Surface Solutions?
Surface Solutions is, the people who are providing are magnesium chloride.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, which is working out very well. We're also using a lot more of it, which, we'll see how that pans out. But we are definitely up on usage now over prior years. But that may be some kind of change in viewing how it should really be done, and how much it'd go down, so we'll see.
Well, the weather determines all that. So the weather determines all that.
Well, yeah, but, well, the magnesium chloride, you know, you can't do it quick, you have to make sure that you cover the road properly, and I think we're working on that. I think we've just used more this year. The grade has been moving quite a bit. You don't see it, because we have 70 miles of road, 50 miles of dirt road, but it's out there, and that's what we need, they need to get onto now. We'll continue ditching and rushing, you know, things like that, but we're still doing roadside mowing right now, rented a tractor, so that's still going on for another week.
So grading's gonna go on until the ground freezes?
Probably not that long, but another couple of weeks, I would think. I'll have to check with Mike on the schedule for that.
Because it seemed to me, on the, at least on the roads around my house, after holding up for months and months, that with the recent rains, I'm seeing potholes again.
Yeah, yeah, I would think, like Horton Hill, I mean, the ones that are the main impact roads, they definitely would need to get done again. Like Horton, parts of West Mountain, Alter, parts of Tancom, you know, they're getting a lot of volume. East Road, and they're always gonna start coming apart before everything else.
But it does seem to me that they're holding up more, and I'm attributing that mostly to the, to the compactor, but maybe it's the magnesium chloride as well.
Yeah, it's kind of a combination of the work done, the change in how the work is done, and the roller, I think that's more a long-term, it helps now, but it's gonna take a few seasons for that to have its full impact, I think, but it is...
There's no way to grab that.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a combination of things. I think generally, the roads all around town have been, have been pretty good this year. I mean, you're gonna hate a pothole, I have potholes, you know, everywhere. If you're gonna have dirt, you're gonna have potholes. If you have pavings, you know, go down to New Jersey, you have potholes on every block, and they're all paved.
And the paving, the paving's been done on Myers Road for the apron?
The paving on Myers is done, and Northwood's all done, yeah. The only thing left on Myers is, like I said, the underdrain at the top for this year. Myers, we may need to do a full rebuild from the bend down through the evergreens, and just redo that, but that's off in the future.
See what the drain does first.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, see what the drain does first before we spend any more on it.
Kenny, how'd you guys make out looking at the truck Friday? Did you go to White, did you go to Whitman Friday?
Oh, yeah, that's a truck.
Pretty nice.
All that makes a Dodge look, it's garbage.
We do, we can move right to that, because this is tabled, so we can bring up these bids again. The recommendation is to purchase a Chevy from Hometown Chevrolet for $40,498. Sorry, Ross Chevrolet, which is called Hometown over here.
Yeah, it seemed to have two names.
Yeah, it seems to have two names. And that was, there was one other bid, as you remember from Stevens Dodge, for $45,350. So we're looking at a cheaper Chevy that Mike and Ken looked at, and they both highly recommended.
Yeah, it's got the Durmax or the Allison transmission.
Yeah, plus traction rear end, limited slip differential, the cab tip, or the hood tips front.
Tilt forward, yeah, yeah.
And it's a lot easier to get at, it's gonna be a lot easier to maintain.
Is that a fiberglass?
The frame, I think, looked heavier than the Dodge. It's got a transmission cooler radiator like this behind the cab, and that type of body that's going on there is...
You need a trans cooler.
It's really nice body.
Yeah.
And it's got really, I mean, it's the kind of tires you want for that kind of work. It's got mudstone tires that are really aggressive, that, I haven't seen a truck that I was impressed with as that one in quite a while.
It's got the air ride seats in it.
No, it rides like a truck without the body on it, you wouldn't want to go very far, so you get a load out of it.
All right, Ken, do you want to make a motion that we buy the Chevrolet for $40,000?
$498.
I would make a motion. Why don't you set truck?
Motion from Ken, seconded by Joe. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving the truck purchase, say aye.
Aye.
It's 5-0-0.
Just as a reminder, that's just out of the equipment fund, there's no loan or anything on that.
Right, yep.
And let's see, I think that was probably everything I had for the road.
Oh, that was one thing I would mention, Dave.
Yeah.
When we were going over there, Mike and I stopped over where Weaver was working.
Yeah.
Have that job over there, and he talked to one of the workers, where they put that fridge tray in, I guess they caught him out of water.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
So it was well worth putting that in there.
Yeah, it's already draining it out.
Okay.
There's that little spring under that road.
Yeah.
Good, we made the right choice then, with the extra $10,000 for the, for the drain.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, it takes to item nine, revised town plan. The Select Board, not Select Board, the Planning Commission has been working for a year, produced a new town plan. They have completed their part of it. They formally sent it to us on September 25th, and from the time they sent it to us, we have, it was sent to us on September 25th, we have between 30 and 120 days, so that's roughly October 25th until January 25th, to hold two hearings, and I hope during that time approve it. And so I've been, was provided by Shelley Stiles, Arizona Administrator, this handy-dandy checklist of things that we have to do and the amount of time there. And so I've been going through it, Dave checked my math today, so I'm gonna suggest this is a schedule. We have to prepare any changes that we want to make. I know some of you have been looking at it already. I'm suggesting that we, we hold a special meeting next Monday, just for the purpose of hashing out changes that we want to make to the plan. After we decide on our, let's see, that's step one, or that's, in this list, it's step two. Step three is adopt a resolution to hold public hearing. And I'm gonna recommend that we go ahead tonight and set the date for both of our hearings that we have to have for November 4th, first meeting in November, so that would be at a regular Select Board time, and first meeting in December as the second ones. That gives us a month between us, between them, it gives us the time that we need to hash out our differences, get a final document, get it in the paper, wherever it needs to be, with a 15-day warning for the first hearing, and by go ahead and, if we go ahead and advertise the, I don't see any reason not to go ahead and advertise both hearings at this point, do you, Dave?
No, no, we can read, they're fixed dates, so we can just advertise them.
Yeah, we can save on, on advertising space, too, right? Or do you think we have to warn them?
We'll just have to recheck, we may have to advertise the second meeting after the first meeting, I believe, I think we're gonna have to.
Okay, but we can certainly decide tonight on the dates to have them, and that will give us all the targets that we need. and that will give us all the targets that we need.
What's your plan on timing? As far as will we meet at 5:30 and wait for the public to comment? Or will this be our regular 6:30 and we'll take it up in public, under public comments? Ken, I have a, I don't feel right about having it right along with the regular selectman's meeting. I don't know why. I just think it should be designated, this is why we're here.
Okay.
But that, but...
So it's not divided? We'll just have it solely along?
Yeah. When we have done this in the past, what we have done typically is we would have it on a selectman night. We would start the hearing at 7:00 PM. So we would have select board business before that. And then at 7:00 PM, which gives people plenty of time to get home from work and come in.
I'm okay with that. I just didn't want to say, in the middle of public comments during our regular meeting, we say, okay, we're gonna take comments on this.
Oh, no, it's a, it's a separate deal. It's by law, it's a separate deal.
That's what I want.
Yeah, it may coincide with the night of a selectboard meeting, but the hearing is an entity in itself.
Yes, okay, perfect.
So what are we talking about for time?
So...
14th.
So, uh, well, the 14th is just a special meeting for us to hash it out. That could be at a regular time, 6:30. I don't think we need cat TV here. We're just gonna be wordsmithing. That's boring for the people involved. It's really bad television. So I think we'll just, it's certainly an open meeting. People are welcome to come. But I don't know that we need to drag Jim out here for...
Just a reminder, it's a holiday, too.
Yes.
Oh, what?
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
Columbus. Is this person's day?
I forgot that.
Did you?
Yes.
Oh, it's Columbus.
I'm on today when I call it Columbus Day.
Yeah, okay.
It's a watch. Let it go.
Does anybody have a problem meeting Monday night, the 14th? Okay, then we'll go ahead and meet. Are you okay, Dave?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna be here anyway because I want everybody out of the building because I have stuff to move and classes to go. I'll take the holidays.
Good, no, I didn't, I didn't make that connection.
Sometimes it's best to get everyone out when I wanna dismantle things.
I like doing it that way because if we tried, I don't want to get too close to the end date in case, you know, we get into a fistfight about something and we need to take our time. Okay, so hearings will be 11:04 and 12:02. Then after we have our special meeting, then it has to, we have to file a copy with the clerk. She has to contact other people, like the regional planning commission, with that. During that time, we have to prepare a notice for the public hearing, so... The rest of that week, by Friday.
Well, we'll have that prepared before the meeting because we will only have to change in line or two if there was a substantial change to what the planning commission made. Because that has to be submitted to the banner by Tuesday to hit Friday. It has to be Friday to make 11:04. It'll be 15 days from 11:04. So, you know, I'll just be able to doctor whatever if there's some substantial change from the notes that Shelley already has because it's basically the same warning that she had to do for the planning commission hearing. So if we make some substantial change, just change that the next morning.
Right.
So it'd be pretty quickly easy to do.
Right. Okay, so yeah, publishing the notice and then getting the changes that we make on next Monday publicized again. And that has to also be 15 days before the hearing. That sounds like that's easier because that's just getting it up on our website essentially. We have to prepare a summary. The same summary should work again unless we make substantial changes, which I don't expect us to do. This just says we have to post the notice of the meeting in the usual places. And we have to loop back to the planning commission. They have to review our changes. We have the final say, but they have to state whether or not the changes that we make are essentially legal for a plan, that they still, you know, fit state law in terms of being a plan. The planning commission cannot tell us, you can't, you know, promote, you know, this or that. But they do have the responsibility of making sure that we keep everything legal. So we'll hold those two hearings and... Then adopt the plan in the end. And I believe the last time, after the, by the time we got to the second hearing, there were no, not much input, and we didn't make any changes, and we approved it that night. So if all goes well, we can do that. If not, we can hash out and do it at our second regular meeting in December. And then we've still got, like I said, till the end of January if something crazy happens. But I'm not expecting that. And then that will be our town plan for eight years now is the lifetime of the plan. It used to be five years.
Should we consider a different starting time for our meeting on those two nights? Is half an hour enough to do what we need to do before what comes in?
That's up to the board. We could consider, you know, we could do the routine business, and we could take it up again. I think we can establish a time for the hearing. We can, you know, say the hearing goes from 7:00 to 8:00 or 7:00 to 8:30 to make sure it doesn't go on all night again. It's not something I'm anticipating. But I'm open to starting earlier if you'd rather get it all out of the way first.
I guess my suggestion would be let's start at 6:00. If we could start at 6:00, I just, I just think we're gonna lose momentum if we...
Yep, that's probably a good idea. And we don't have to decide that tonight even. Tonight, though, I would like to, uh... Pass a motion to hold hearings on the new town plan on 11:04 and 12:02. Motion from Art to, for the select board to hold hearings for the new town plan on November 4th and on December 2nd, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0. Okay. Good, that's really all we have to do tonight. Then we all have the homework of reading the plan and coming in with what we want to change next Monday. What time do you want to meet next Monday?
6:00 AM, right?
Well, next Monday is just us hashing out our differences over the town plan. If you want to come earlier or do it regular time, it doesn't...
I'm happy to be regular time.
10:00 AM, 6:00.
Okay, so we'll meet regular time next week?
10:14, right?
10:14, yes. All right, Dave, we're gonna meet at regular time then.
Okay.
All right, good. That's all we have to do tonight. If anyone has any comments on the plan, we're certainly open to a preview.
I'm sure, I'm sure once my school teacher wife...
Yeah, Joe's wife has already found mistakes.
I know.
We're happy to say have been caught, was caught by an alert citizen who sent in some information about the new name of, or the new owner of the childcare facility, yeah. Okay, I am Tim, municipal phone service. What's that about, Dave?
Uh, we need a new provider for our phone service. Our current one, well, there's multiple problems here. The fire department currently is serviced by B C N Consolidated and two separate Comcast accounts. We have B C N Consolidated and Comcast accounts at Cole Hall. So by consolidating, I've been talking to Xfinity and Comcast business about consolidating all these together. And in the first year, our contract with B C N is up in December. I only renewed it for one year last time because when something goes wrong, you call these guys in Boca Raton who tell you there's nothing wrong with the phone and it's all your mistake. And we had a deadline here for a couple of months. And out of blue, the line started working. But they insisted they never did any work.
Right.
It was never broken. So they wanted $180 for the service call, and I said, you know, who came? Show me some technical work. So they basically sent the 14-day shut-off notice for the phone system. So I was like, well, that's enough of that. So we're kind of done with them.
They don't care.
No, they don't care. They just don't care. So, but they kind of had me over a barrel because they're gonna turn us off.
Right.
But I'm like, where, you know, this phone line's been down, and you're telling me it miraculously healed itself and the phone lines back. Now there's nothing wrong. We tested. I said, you tested it from Boca Raton.
Yeah.
Somehow it works again.
It's the power of priority.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was miraculous. But in the first year, consolidating all this with Comcast, we will run a little bit, like $10 more expensive than being with B C N. However, we will get charged, you know, hundreds of dollars for non-responsors where even the new garage has Comcast business. And when we call them, someone shows up. When you have a problem, the truck shows up. You talk to a person, you know, it's all together. Uh, this contract's for three years, so at the end of the first year, and this is not knowing what B C N's gonna offer. So by the time they make their offer for contract renewal, the two will be equal. Because they'll both start on December 1st, so Comcast business would be equal to B C N. You have to assume they're gonna go up 3% to 5%. And then in the second year, we start saving money. In the third year, we're saving even more money. And then you look again because you have to keep looking at these all the time to try and find a better package. Yeah, because everything changes all the time. But a big thing here that we have a problem with is we have too many accounts. The fire department has too many accounts, and they need to be consolidated. So, you know, we'll save enough here, and they're gonna save a lot. So that we'll be equal at least, if not saving money the first year. And then it'll go more savings the second and third year. But we need to get away from who we have.
What's the annual dollar value of this contract?
Uh, about, well, you have the total of all, the fire department and everything, about $7,200 on seven different contracts.
Do you...
That's for a year?
Yeah.
Is that the, can we buy them out or...
No, it's expired. I only did it for a year.
Oh, okay.
And I started talking with Comcast about it when we were doing the garage. And so they provided me estimates on how much it would cost for them to do it. You know, it's another broker who's gonna toss out B C N or, well, whoever took over from Silverdine, I don't know. But we've already had them. We've had these guys, B C N. And the only real player can, well, consolidate it. You know, the only real players now are Comcast business and some broker which is gonna send me to another company in Boca Raton or Tulsa or something.
You do that yourself.
And, yeah, it's kind of, it's nice in a service that has to be provided like this to be able to get someone to actually respond, you know, especially in a municipal setting.
Do we own our equipment?
No.
So it would be...
The only thing we own is a little box on the wall downstairs.
So they would be coming in with new equipment?
Well, what kind of equipment are you talking about?
Phones and...
Oh, no, we own, oh, we own all the phones. No, they would just be hooking us up. Alls they're gonna do is transfer their numbers. We own all the phones. We own all, I'm sorry, we own, I was thinking of equipment like switchboards. We own all the phones.
I'm thinking of stuff like, you know, our centralized...
No, our centralized things like this big on the wall downstairs.
General business.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I remember we went with B C N and the equipment was in the package when we...
Yeah, but the package, that part of the package was from the other part of that package. B C N is the service provider now. We bought the equipment outright from the broker.
Okay.
So they've set that up, and now I can get anyone to really service that thing. It wasn't that expensive. Well, no, I shouldn't say it wasn't that expensive. I think the box was about $2,000 at the time. But the rest of it, everybody in all of the different places, they own all their equipment. We own our equipment. So basically, part of it is just, let me sign the agreements to transfer the services over. And of course, that runs into B C N, too. You know, they threatened two months ago that if I transferred early, they were gonna charge six months of total usage for leaving the contract early. It's just...
How dare you?
Yeah, I know, I know. But it's just something that I think it's just time to, in this area, you just have to keep, not in this area, but in telecommunications, you have to just keep moving.
Um, do you don't want to let Comcast and Consolidated duke it out for our services? By that, I mean put it out to bid?
Yeah, I don't know if they would even bid Consolidated.
No.
Because what we're getting, what we're getting with Comcast, too, is other services, the internet we're getting from them. We'll be getting, because the firehouses have TVs. And it's all the combined services we'd be getting. I mean Comcast, I don't know what their internet service is, but I know, uh, not Comcast, Consolidated. I don't know theirs or, I know Comcast are excellent, so from personal use of it.
So we're getting like a TV-phone bundle or a chat bundle?
Yeah, you know, they run business bundles like that because, like, that's why we have so many different things. Because everyone is getting a different part of it. Consolidated is getting some of the computer lines. The Comcast, there's three different Comcast accounts with the fire department. We have a different one here, and we each have separate B C N. We each belong to B C N for the phone lines. So it's hard to go outside to, only one person's really providing all three services together. And, you know, the TV is part of it for the firehouses. Now we get a free line here, I'm just, dead in the corner. But in an emergency, it might be nice to put on, you know, if we had like an emergency operations center here, we need a TV, which now we would have.
HBO stuff.
No, HBO has. And then the internet capability is very good. We have that internet at the garage, and we have that phone service at the garage. I've had nothing but Comcast or Verizon for the last 30 years. I haven't had anything to do with a phone company correctly. And the B C N was a good initial contract, which is, of course, once you renew it, it goes... Yeah, and immediately they start nickel and diming you over repairs. Because, you know, I had to exert a lot of pressure not to pay the second one. Because it's like, you know, I want to see somebody. I want to see somebody here. Don't tell me you fixed this phone, you know. And of course, it started working, yeah, but they didn't go any further than that one.
Not to get off point, but in relation to the business equipment, we did just purchase a printer about a year ago, right?
A printer? Yeah.
New printer. It was something for maps or whatever, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, well, that, we talked about a year ago. It just came last week.
Oh, wow, okay.
It's over here. Yeah, that was only like $400.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because it's up here. It suits our needs. And the only map we're gonna print in color is 11 by 17. I'm sorry. You know, if you want bigger, go down to Staples because...
All right, let's figure out the phones, and then we can talk about the printer.
Yeah, if you want, I can send this all around. We can run it at the next meeting. I just wanted to get it out here.
Just go with it.
He's done enough research.
It sounds like he's done enough research, yeah.
We can't nickel. We can't.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you want to, I think, unless you're ready, you have a contract on...
Well, there are contracts here. Yeah, they sent me all the agreements.
Okay, so you're ready to sign, to sign in?
Yeah, you know, I'm fine with it because even adding in all the taxes and everything, like I said, it works out equal for the first year, gets better the second year, and gets much better the third year, and then we're back like you are with all these contracts.
Okay, so is there a motion to transfer all of our various phone and internet contracts to Comcast business? Moved by Tony, seconded by Art. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0. Joe, did you get your question about the printer answered?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was just wondering how it was working out. I remember we had a printer that we were purchasing for the mapping, and I just haven't heard anything about it. And as of all, while we're thinking of business equipment, we're talking about it. It'd be a great time to ask.
And it was, it's one of those things. There's a number of things through the construction that has come up, and we still have some things to purchase here.
See, I don't forget things.
But it is, the box is actually wrecked now.
There it is.
All right, do you need any signatures from us?
Uh, no, I can, they're all made up for me to sign.
Okay.
Because it's just an ongoing monthly expense, utilities.
Yep, yep, okay.
The dog ordinance.
Okay.
I've been talking to the sheriff about getting involved in this. Then I was talking to some of the other Tams and some of the attorneys up in BLCT and I was up at a conference. And the best way to do this is to take our, I didn't realize our dog ordinance needs to be updated because it's not worded correctly in parts. ...verded correctly in parts. So, this will allow us to, uh, add the sheriff directly in as an enforcement agency. Um, so, I just want to keep you, keep it updated and keep the people updated that we are changing this, we're no longer gonna use, try and use constables, we're gonna stop making phone calls. There's fifty to sixty people who are on the unlicensed dog list, whether they have the dogs or not, they don't respond. So, by the time, uh, I have a rewrite, this will be in, this will be up for, uh, being decided at town meeting. This will include, if you don't respond to the notice that's sent out routinely by the clerk's office, a sheriff will visit you. The sheriff will, if you don't respond to that, you'll just be issued a summons to go to the judicial bureau, which is an automatic hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine plus court cost. Plus, I'm working with our attorney to see if we can roll in an appropriate amount of the cost of the sheriff to enforce this. So, you're gonna go from a ten-dollar dog license to maybe close to three hundred dollars in fines and penalties. So, uh, I think we've tried, uh, this board especially from lowering, I mean, we lowered the rates, like, five years ago, and we still have the same core that will not do this. And, uh, basically, we've had several animal bites, and fortunately, these have been okay, but, you know, um, we have difficulty getting parts of this enforced as it is. So, I need an agency with a little bit more push to it. And if the sheriff comes and issues you a summons, it's just not going away. You're gonna have to go to the judicial bureau, or you're gonna have to pay the waiver fine. But even if you pay the waiver fine, you're gonna wind up paying whatever it will turn out to be fifty dollars plus additional costs online for having to hire a sheriff to do something like this. So, again, your ten-dollar dog license is gonna go to a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. It's really not worth it. But, uh, from everyone in this building who called the list, the clerk, the assistant clerk, the zoning officer did it one year, letters have gone out, door hangers started to go out, and we don't, we just, the last part is the enforcement end, and we're not getting it done effectively. We all know the story of what we've tried in the last few years, and we just never got on the, off, off the ground. So, this will be a simple contract, as soon as we pass this, I've talked to Chad, we'll sit down, we'll work out the parameters of the enforcement. It'll be separate than our annual contract, and that's the rates that we'll put in as part of the fines and penalties. And, you know, uh, it's the only way out of this that I can see now.
Does it have to be approved by the voters, or is it something...
Yes.
Oh, it's gotta be approved by the voters.
Yeah. So, this is one of many ordinances and bylaws that I'm gonna start rewriting now that I have more time to, to do things like this. So, many of our ordinances need to be updated completely, including this one I just discovered. And, uh, we have lots of bylaws that should be just done away with or updated. So, we need to, we need to clarify a lot of these things.
Are all these Australian ballot, or on the, by the floor, or how, how are they...
Uh, I'll have to check whether you can do this off the floor. I believe this has to be Australian ballot, too. Ordinances and bylaws, zoning bylaws and town plans have to be Australian ballot, I believe.
Okay.
So, you don't wanna have too many of our...
Town plan is...
The ballot will be huge.
Town plan is approved by the Select Board.
Town plan is Australian ballot.
No, no, the, the Select Board approves the town plan in the end.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's our plan.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
I thought I said here...
Yeah, we take citizen input on it, but it's, it's essentially our to-do list that we're writing.
Well, we need that one. Because there's a section for Australian ballot on town plans.
Um...
We'll, we'll read that, and we'll look. We have plenty of time to worry about that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did before.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's right, yeah.
I don't remember, yeah.
Yeah.
But fine. Takes a lot of space on the ballot, anyway.
Right.
Now, is that good for, um, vicious dog, or...
Yeah, this, this has everything, and they changed, and that's one of the key changes in this, is a vicious dog, where there was this loose implication that, uh, vicious dog is one that threatens you, you feel fear from, but it's not really defined. This one really nails that down. So, the two active cases, or which had been active cases, could have been pursued a lot more directly had we had this in place, or, or used this new law.
What are the actions for it?
Uh, it's, it's all, uh, there's a broad range of what the board could decide to do. But we can also just issue a big fine for your dog being out there. And, you know, these people have to go to court and explain that their dog was really, as it knocked over the bicyclist, was playing, running loose in the street. I mean, you know, there's, there's far more implications for doing things than coming in and just saying, I'll keep him in the yard and stuff. All of that is still part of it.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you've got a rate so that you don't have, because I'm a dog person, I don't wanna condemn somebody's dog to death.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's a old, very old wording that's never gonna be changed, but, yeah, if that, there's so many steps before that.
Muzzling.
Yeah, muzzling, keep him locked up. I mean, you have to be a very negligent dog owner to get to that point, or your dog has to be sick.
So, the dog, the dog pays the price for the order, in that case?
Yeah. Well, yeah. Yeah, but that's, I think that's pretty rare.
Well, I don't know. Some people shouldn't be allowed to have a dog.
Oh, yeah.
We could try to write that into the order.
Let's take that one like mine.
That's a vicious dog, yeah.
All right, um, so you want to, um, permission to charge ahead rewriting the order?
Yeah, I just wanted to keep, let the board and keep, uh, this an active topic.
Yeah.
Uh, because people have to start hearing this, and as it's passed, which I'm sure it will be, um, they have to know that there's gonna be consequences for just not following this. Nearly every other law ordinance has a better enforcement mechanism, and the judicial bureau isn't the best method by far to enforce any of this stuff, but, uh, bringing the sheriffs and having them involved, other than, uh, well, we've tried everything from the constables down to everything.
Public nuisance.
Yeah, it is a public nuisance.
And it's a, it's safeguard.
Yeah, and it's, it's...
We've had two dog fights already.
Yeah, this, this can be a danger.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need to know what these, what these dogs are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any other business?
Yes, just to let the board know that we know all time for, uh, our insurance, so I'll be following that this week. Because we already know a change, there's no rates, of course, in this, but it's just updating them on what we have and going over the list of things. So, I'll be signing the application and sending that in later this week. Keep us up to date, and I'll let you know when they tell us how much that's gonna be.
Okay.
And we have, uh, error, an error and omission from the listers. Uh, this is an explanation of the error that occurred with the property owned by Mr. Christopher White Parcel, I D. zero-two-zero-one-four-five-point-one. With two additional sublots containing ten-point-one-nine acres, the property transfer was filed in error, with the transferrer, the seller, being listed as Old First Church, and Mr. Christopher White being listed as a transferee buyer. These entities should have been reversed on the transfer, as Mr. Christopher White was current owner of the property. The deeds recorded and land records are accurate. This error has been corrected, resulting in eighty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred, uh, valuation as of ten nineteen, being removed in twenty-nineteen, as built grand list, as the owner, Old First Church qualifies as an exempt property owner. Basically, the property owner transferred this property to the church, uh, and it was recorded backwards. Uh, and that was by the law from involved, and I understand. So, uh, this was discovered by, by our assessor, and, uh, they reversed it. So, it's a tax-exempt organization now.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, we just need...
So, our grand list just went down by eighty-nine thousand dollars?
Yep. No turn signals for the truck, Ken.
So, what do you need them?
They need us to approve this, right?
Yes.
Um, is there a motion to approve the error and omission as described by David, reading from the letter from the listers?
Some.
Moved by Art?
Second.
Second by Tony. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero. So, that is, um, well, we don't need to go through it again. You need me to sign?
Yeah, you decide. Then the last item on the other business that I have is Halloween. And two of you who live in the neighborhood, I've been approached by a couple people in the area who are not thrilled with this activity.
That's too bad.
Yeah, so, you know, we normally just pass a, a resolution to close the street on Halloween from five to eight, and, uh, I'd like to keep up with what we've done in the last couple years, hiring three sheriffs, one for this corner and one for each end of Church Street. But I do want the board to be aware that a couple of people came to me and, uh...
What's their objection?
Uh, too many kids, too much money buying candy, street closed down, kind of mayhem, uh...
All right, I'll be honest, you know, being, being a resident on Cleveland Avenue, Halloween Haven, I love it. Absolutely love it. It's, it's bigger than Christmas.
Yeah, and it's kind of bigger, yeah.
And it's amazing, you see all the kids and the creative costumes, and it's just, I love it, absolutely. My mom comes up to hand out, you know, hand out candy to the, the pack of wolves.
Yeah, it's, it's the biggest thing Shasbury is known for around here.
We, we, we do, we love it, absolutely love it.
We can't stop it.
No, no.
And that kind of lets kids around for much longer. I make the motion, we close down Cleveland Avenue, no one hired, but we gotta hire three sheriffs.
Yeah.
Is, is one of them gonna be...
One's on this corner here.
Yes.
And the other two are at the each end.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to have somebody here.
Across that, yeah.
Because it goes to fire department.
No, there's no one, there's no one left to do this, we have to hire.
And there's no hayrides this year?
Oh, no, there hasn't been a hayride in years.
Wow. Yeah, about five years or so.
All right, we have a motion from Art to close Cleveland Avenue for Halloween and hire the sheriff for traffic control.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Three sheriffs.
Three sheriffs, please.
Three sheriffs, deputies for traffic control?
Yeah, from five to eight P. M.
From five to eight P. M. Any discussion?
Wait, yeah, actually, is eight, eight P. M., usually people are still out.
Nine P. M.
I'd go eight-thirty, what the hell? Unless they don't do half-hours.
Well, uh...
It just seems, I remember, like, in past years, it seems like eight o'clock, people are still...
Okay, well, we can make it, we can make it nine. I'm not gonna make it four hours, because the sheriff will pack up five to nine.
I mean, I think most of the little kids are kind of, you know, the older, like, you know, pre-teen teenage, teenagers are out running around, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, whatever, yeah.
Without objection, five to nine?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
I have nothing else.
Anybody else have business?
They, uh, I know they moved up Airport Road, up, going up toward the new gravel garage, and they pushed that back. It's, looks really good.
Mm-hmm.
If you're gonna bury it, I'll see, it's...
Who's running tomorrow?
Tim. Tim's running, running the rented one, and I, I believe David's taking the old, uh, one out, too, occasionally, uh, when he can't, when he can't be grading.
It's gonna make a difference, but...
No, you know, it's gonna take time, but I, I think they've made great improvements in the last year, a half, year and a half.